The Manitoba impact in global health research in a moment. But we're going to slip in one talk at the beginning, and that's Dr. John Schellenberg from University of Saskatchewan. He had a technical glitch in his presentation on Friday, and so we're going to give him an opportunity to present now. And we know John, he did his PhD in Manitoba, so he's also the future of Manitoba research. And he does studies on the microbiome in the female genital tract. So over to you, John.
Thanks, everybody. And thanks very much to the selection committee and the organizers for giving me two chances to give this talk. I really appreciate it. And yes, I'm going to be telling you about the vaginal microbiome, and it's specifically about Gardnerella vaginalis, which is an important member of the microbiome and an important source of psyllidase in the genital tract. So this is the beast we're talking about. This study is based on over 100 isolates collected from Nairobi samples, Canadian samples, and Belgian samples. You can see the typical gram-negative appearance and its propensity to clump and form biofilm. This is just the context that we're all here talking about. I'm really interested in the microbiological context of HIV infection. How does the microbiome influence whether or not founder populations of virus in the vaginal mucosa expand or decay? So you're all familiar with the sort of the inflammation model of AIDS pathogenesis, the eclipse phase, the peak biremic phase, and the chronic immune activation phase. So you guys are all really good at what's going on on the mucosal side, and I'm really interested in pursuing what's going on on the microbial side. And specifically in this talk, I'm going to be talking about how Gardnerella specifically might impact the structure and the protective function of the mucosal layer, including vaginal mucus and vaginal mucosal effectors such as antibodies and antigen-presenting cells. So there's lots of mechanisms why microbiota might affect HIV infection. I'm going to focus on this one. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about Gardnerella to start with. First discovered in 1953 in this odd little paper from the U.S. Armed Medical Forces Journal. Gardner and Dukes in 1955 proposed a new clinical entity called Hemophilus vaginalis vaginitis, the causative agent of which is hemophilus, or was back then called hemophilus vaginalis. When we jump forward to the 1980s, after a couple of decades of research, the organism and the ideology are still unclear. The organism is, after many name changes, is now called Gardnerella vaginalis, and the clinical entity that it causes or is part of is known as bacteriovaginosis. This is a picture of Gardner. He really hated the name Gardnerella. He really thought it was a ridiculous name. So the 80s gave us some clinical diagnostic criteria and some laboratory diagnostic criteria to distinguish normal and abnormal vaginal microflora. You can see that Gardnerella biofilm is kind of a normal component, or sorry, an abnormal component of the vaginal microbiology. In 1984, a new psyllidase was discovered in Gardnerella vaginalis, and that has led to a diagnostic for BV based on psyllidase activity, which is also, as well as being a problem in HIV infection, is also a really big problem in preterm birth. So the 80s have kind of left us with this sort of inadequate model of what BV is. And I think, I think we can say that this is what BV looks like, but I don't think we can really say what causes it, or how to, like, why does lactobacillus abundance decrease, and so on. We don't know why it happens, and we don't know how to fix it. So now we're in the molecular era, and using sequences of phylogenetically informative genes. Starting in the early 2000s, this is sort of a very early picture of the vaginal microbiome using clone libraries based on Chaperon and 60 Universal Target, which is an alternative to 16S, our DNA, and is much better, in my opinion. So Janet, because of the high phylogenetic resolution of CPN60, was able to distinguish four subgroups of Gardnerella as early as 2005. We worked together to characterize the vaginal microbiota of commercial sex workers in Nairobi leading up to 2011. Again, we saw this huge diversity in Gardnerella sequences. This is a recent study done by the Vogue Group here in Canada, which Janet Hill, my supervisor, my postdoc supervisor, is a part of. This is a heat map of all the organisms found in a group of 310 women, where the rows are organisms and the columns are women. And we've got lots of fancy statistical approaches now to define groups of women based on the profile of their vaginal microbes. You can see the colors on the top bar there indicate community-state types that are statistically defined as being sort of real groupings of women in this group of, I guess it's 310. So, but I like to look at it like this. I like to look at the data phylogenetically. The size of the circles is proportional to the proportion of the microbiota that that organism is in that group. And a key, a key finding here is that women are dominated by different subgroups of Gardnerella. So some women are dominated by Gardnerella A, some by Gardnerella C. And this might be really important, because we've up until now been considering Gardnerella to be one thing, and we really know now that it's not. So in 2012, we proposed that Gardnerella should be divided into four subgroups. Around this time, we were doing a bunch of enzyme activity assays, and we, and we found that using a qualitative filter spot assay, that only subgroup B isolates were psyllidase-positive in an initial group. Another group was working on this, Louis et al., around the same time, and they published this quantitative analysis of psyllidase production in Gardnerella. And when we overlaid our subgroups over it, we found that all but one of their psyllidase-positive strains was a subgroup B strain, one was a subgroup C strain. So this confirmed our results, and we went ahead and characterized phylogenetically and characterized psyllidase activity in 112 isolates from three continents. Mainly what we found is that there was no geographic trend. All the, all the subgroups were found in all continents, indicating ancient divergence of these microbial lineages, as well as an almost perfect match between CPN60-based phylogeny and whole genome-based phylogeny. 16S is useless to distinguish these subgroups. The inter and intra-differences are identical. 16S is inadequate for lots of reasons. So we did a couple of PCR assays to detect the putative psyllidase gene in these isolates. We found that all B, C, and D subgroups were psyllidase-positive, but only one subgroup A isolate was positive. In terms of psyllidase activity, we were surprised to see that, well, it confirmed our earlier findings that subgroup B, all subgroup B isolates were moderate to strong psyllidase producers, and only three of 36 subgroup C strains, all Belgian, were also psyllidase-positive. So the presence of psyllidase does not predict activity. So do we have the wrong gene? Is the gene broken in some subgroups? Or are the differences in the regulatory milieu? So that's what we're investigating right now. We're using omics, building on work that I did with Richard Sparling during my first, my first postdoc, where we were characterizing biofuels-producing organisms using transcriptomics and proteomics, coupled with whole genome sequencing. So we've sequenced representatives of all four subgroups and some other interesting strains, and done comparative genomics with the type strain. And we've also done some pretty in-depth proteomics with Ole Krokken at the Manitoba Center for Systems Biology. And we've been able to define central metabolic pathways of Gardnerella vaginalis type strain for the first time, using this information. So yesterday, during the target cell session, I saw lots of talk about different types of models that might be useful for addressing, for understanding the interaction of HIV with the mucosal layer. And so I'm really interested in all of those and would like to help or pursue in some way the development of in vitro epithelial models to understand specifically the role of psyllidase in attachment proliferation and biofilm formation of this organism at the mucosal surface. And finally, I'd just like to put a plug in that while we're working on this, Gardnerella really needs to be reclassified as four different species, and there needs to be a greater appreciation in general, I think, for the diverse, the diverse phylogeny and function of these very metabolically active communities that are pressed right up against us. So, thank you.
We have time for a question, if there is one. Right here. Catherine.
My question was that John mentioned that Gardnerella is associated with preterm birth, so I was wondering if any mechanisms are known for why that occurs, and if there could be some sort of relationship to the mucosal immune system?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it must be a similar mechanism. It's sort of, it's inflammation, it's ascendance of pathogens into the placenta. It's, again, and you see this in the gut, you see it in a lot of different places, this preponderance of gram-negative anaerobic organisms over gram-positive lactobacillus organisms that are seen as protective lead to all kinds of reproductive health problems, HIV infection being one, preterm birth being another problem. But in terms of specific mechanisms, I couldn't really say.
Okay, great. Thanks very much, John. Okay, great. Now we'll turn to the special session. I'll ask Thomas to start making his, his way up, and also the other speakers, if you can come closer to the front so that we can save a bit of time in transitioning. So my name's Keith Volk, and I'm pleased to be co-chairing this with Dr. Jean-Bert Walilarouche, who's at the National Coordinating Center for Infectious Diseases here in Manitoba. So what is this special session? This special session is called "The Future of Manitoba's Global Impact in HIV Research." And it's just an opportunity to really, as the host city, is to stop and reflect a little bit, not only on where we've come from, because I think we've seen with Jamie Blanchard giving the plenary lecture, with Stephen Moses giving the Mark Weinberg Award in the past, Frank Plummer has made the Mark Weinberg Talk as well. I think those are all, you know, good examples of how Manitoba, in a very small, from a small center, has made a very concerted effort in the, in the global sphere. And I think that's great, and it needs to be celebrated. But what we're focusing on today is the future, so it's not the old parts like me or other people like that, Stephen and Jamie and others. It's, you know, although we respect their contributions, especially Alan Ronald, who started everything, but we want to look to the future. So we've asked five young researchers from the University of Manitoba to come and speak, they're from all different pillars of CAR, and they're just going to talk a little bit about their own research and its global impact. And I also asked them to take one slide and really focus on what their advice would be for where we should be focusing our, the, the future of, of research in, in, in Canada. So a little bit of advice from, not from the past generation, not from the current generation, but from the, from the future. So I hope we'll get to hear some interesting thoughts from them. So we'll jump right into it. And the first speaker is Thomas Maruka. He's assistant professor at the University of Manitoba, and Thomas is an expert in imaging, live imaging of HIV in a whole infected animal. So, Thomas, welcome.
Okay, let's see, laser, awesome. Forward, back, awesome. So to the chairs, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak here today. Just in the next 12 minutes, I just want to give you a sense of what kind of studies that we do in our lab, in our relatively new lab, and really the, the use of technologies, tools, and approaches that are relatively new in the field to address important questions in the field of HIV pathogenesis. I have no collective interest to disclose. So, you know, our lab and many others are really interested in the immune system in the context of the whole body, right? So, so that's, that means that there's a number of immune cell types that are circulating through the body, and it really needs to congregate in an organized manner for them to be able to communicate with each other and exchange information. And these occur in primary and secondary lymphoid organs. Some of them are listed here. And it really allows us to kind of sense any kind of pathogen or any kind of antigen found in virtually any part of the body. And this is important in order to be able to mount an effective immune response in a timely manner. If we actually zoom a little bit into what's going on at the cellular level, really this is controlled by the ability of immune cells, again, specialized immune cells that are able to go in and out of the tissue, congregate as specialized organs, and interact with either other immune cells or also stromal cells in order to be able to transfer information from one cell to another. And some of the examples here are thymic development of T cells in the thymus, you have secondary lymphoid organs where APCs and T cells congregate, and you also have the peripheral tissues where effective memory, effective responses are generated. And then if you actually zoom a little bit in even more, we're looking at the molecular level and really understanding the molecules and the receptors and the cytokines that dictate and control and coordinate cellular migration, cellular function, so that these specialized and rare populations of cells can congregate and, again, mount an effective immune response. So for a number of years now, immunologists have really taken advantage of, of an imaging-type approach to really study this in live tissue or in reliving, living animals. And that is basically the use of a two-photon intravitomicroscopy. And on the left here, you could just very appreciate that compared to conventional excitation using single-photon excitation, where you, you have excitation throughout the sample, with two-photon excitation, you have focal plane excitation only in this little dot here. So you could imagine if you're imaging something long-term in a tissue, this is really the gold standard. You don't want to introduce a lot of heat, introduce a lot of phototoxicity and cell damage. And when we take these animals and isotize them and then put them under the microscope, we're able to take serial images over time and play them back as movies and really give you a sense of their morphology and behavior. And this is just one example. These are naive T cells in the lymph node of, of a mouse, and these T cells are labeled green, and you could appreciate, if I go back here again, play it again, you could appreciate that these T cells are rapidly migrating within the T cell zone, constantly looking for antigen, and therefore trying to look for any signs of infection. So I think what we're trying to do is that the context of your research, it really matters. We're certainly looking at the molecular and the cellular level down here, but you could appreciate that the context of which you study in tissues and in animals really dictates how these molecules and cells are operating. And we hope that by, by working at this level here, we're, we're a little bit closer to the human situation where a lot of these studies are not possible, but at least are surrogate models for, for what's happening in, in, in the human model. And on the right here, you can see that over the last 15 years, a lot of tissues are now able to image in this, in this manner, and again, able to interrogate in a live animal. So just to give you a little bit more of a perspective, for example, this is a selfie that people like to do these days. Big Papi is taking a selfie with the president, and that's, that's really, and that's really the, the level that we're studying, an interaction between two individuals. But if you actually look at the big picture, there's a lot more going on over here. For example, there's the three owners of the Red Sox team that are out of this selfie, and also this guy here, is he really wearing a suit that's made out of the American flag? So again, you know, we're working at a small level, but we're kind of looking at the context and kind of understanding what's going on. So the research objectives here is that, number one, to characterize how HIV infection alters the behavior and morphology of these cells. Number two is to understand the dynamic nature of HIV infection within tissues. And number three is to clarify some of the role in terms of transmission between cells that had been studied for many, many years, but not in the context of, of in vivo tissue. So our overall goal is to be able to gain a better understanding of HIV pathogenesis using approaches that are not possible in, in humans. So to reach this, we have basically a three-pronged approach, which we, we are working on and have established here at the University of Manitoba. Number one is the use of an animal model of HIV infection, and we have humanized mice. There, there are a number of different kinds of models that are available, and although there are some caveats, we still believe that it is a good preclinical model for HIV infection. And these animals do recapitulate a lot of the, the hallmarks of HIV infection in, found in humans. And number two is the ever-growing panel of fluorescent reporters that we could construct using reverse genetics to, in order to be able to visualize cells, or visualize HIV, for that matter, in, in, in cells in real time. And number three is the requirement of a two-photon microscopy facility in a BSL2+ facility, which was established here and is up and running. So we have all three of these arms coming together in order to be able to address some of these questions. So what are these questions? When we focus on the lymph node, because we believe that HIV really is the hotbed, the lymph node is a hotbed for HIV spread and infection, owing to the fact that there's a number of target cells there, and lymphoid tissue in general. So with these humanized mice, we can inject these animals with, with an HIV GFP reporter, and they become viremic. But the really cool thing is that then we could expose that lymph node and visualize exactly what's going on. And very early on, we were able to show that these infected cells, which turned out to be T cells, really had really unusual morphologies. Some of them had very elongated morphologies. But the point here is that they retain their motility, right? So, so we thought that, you know, infected cells would just drop dead immediately and just won't move. But it was clear that there was a period of time when these infected cells continued to migrate, and by virtue of their migration, they're able to kind of take the virus from one part of the tissue to another. And so if we extend that and say, well, you know, if these cells are alive, are they able to kind of take the, the infection from one part of the body to another? And so we could test this by using an FTY-720, it's a drug that allows, or sort of blocks the egress of infected cells out of the, the primary lymph node, but free viruses are not affected. And so free virus could cleave through the blood or the lymph tissue, or sorry, the lymphatics, but infected cells are blocked. And we asked the question, what happens with viremia? So if we actually treat these animals with FTY-720 in the, in the presence of HIV, in the red here, you could see that the majority of the, the animals that were treated with FTY-720 had suppressed viremia compared to vehicle control. And it's important to note that at 56 days, these animals started to creep up, and so the virus was not eliminated, it was largely suppressed. And if you take away the drug, this viremia came back, right? So, so our conclusion is that the migration of HIV-infected T cells is contributing to a systemic dissemination and viremia. We could also do this in a more physiological infection route, intravaginal infection of HIV. And when we do this and we measure viral loads in the cervical vaginal tissue, at the primary site of infection, we see this, this pretty high viral load that doesn't really change over time. This is days post-infection. And if you actually start looking at the, the draining iliac lymph node, the draining cervical lymph node, mesenteric lymph node in the gut, we see this slow spread from the, the draining lymph nodes all the way out to the gut, the lymphoid tissues in the gut. So there's, there is a progression of infection from the, from the initial site of infection to these distant sites. And if we treat these animals with a drug called FTY, sorry, PTX, this is a G-protein coupled receptor antagonist, which, which blocks a lot of cellular migration, you could see that nine out of 10 mice were largely protected from infection at the time of infection compared to PBS controls or a B oligomer, a non-functional PB, form of the, of the proteasis toxin. And you could see that the viral load in the CVT doesn't really change whether you have this drug or not, but if you start looking at the distant lymphoid tissues in the gut, it's largely suppressed. So again, the contribution of migratory cells that are taking that virus from the initial site of infection to these distant lymphoid tissues where we believe it becomes very difficult to eliminate, it plays a big role. Okay. So basically, you know, we're, we're, we're taking our research program from here and trying to understand the nature of these cells that are transmitting this virus. And it could be in the form of infected T cells, it could be in the form of DCs that are infected, it could be in the form of dendritic cells that are picking up the virus and transferring cells, virus to these susceptible cells. So, so our idea here is to, again, use an imaging platform to understand, dendritic cells are in green and T cells are in blue here, to, to really understand these interactions in the context of HIV infection and to really recognize the role of cell-to-cell transmission and the role of these migratory cells in HIV dissemination. So the very end here, I think, you know, in terms of making an impact in HIV research for, you know, some of the, the small labs like, like ours, you know, there's really four things here I wanted to highlight. Number one is really innovation, and I think I wanted to recognize a critical gap in the knowledge and create new tools and approaches so that we could address these questions in a novel way. And really, you know, all brainstorming sessions should start with, you know, wouldn't it be cool if you have this, you know, or can't we actually do that? And we're going to spend a lot of time trying to figure out and trying to come up with these new tools that would be beneficial to, to understanding HIV pathogenesis. Number two, I cannot understate the fact that training of new creative minds, young trainees, is important, and really equipping them with the, the skills and knowledge to be able to explore some of these new areas with, with guidance. Number three is the communication, ongoing dialogue with federal labs and other labs to be able to share information, resources, and facilities to complement common objectives. And number four is the relevance. Make sure that the question we're trying to address is relevant to a wide audience. It's interesting. And try to have a strong comeback to the, the question of, so what? And so, you know, I think if we actually address each of these points, we would do, we would make, continue to make impact as Manitobans. And with that, I want to thank my, my small but dynamic lab at the University of Manitoba, past and present collaborators, and the funding agencies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Thomas.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Thomas. I think we have time for a few questions. Very cool stuff. I have two questions if I can ask. One, does the technique make a difference between distinguishing, distinguishing between active versus latent replication? And number two, is the tool quantitative?
Yeah, so the first question is, is no. Right now, with the, the reports that we have, most of them are visualizing actively-producing virus, and it's an LTR-driven reporter, so it's only when it's on. But there's a lot of effort, obviously, by the field to try to be able to visualize latently-infected cells, and, and we're actually starting to, to work in that field, whether or not we could construct a, a new reporter that would be able to report whether the LTR is on or not. And I think that's a very, very important question, to be able to understand whether latently-infected T cells, for example, are behaving any different from non-infected T cells, and whether we could exploit some of their behaviors. And number two, your question was?
Quantitative.
Quantitative. So, you know, when we, when we do these kinds of studies, we can quantify infection using flow cytometry, right? So over time, that would be a quantitative method. But also, when we have these images, we could track their movements and describe them. So it is quantitative in that we could describe them in a, in a mathematical model. But there is a caveat that it is different from experiment to experiment, but to be able to normalize things is a very important part of our work.
One more question.
So, Thomas, in the humanized mice, only the immune cells from human, right? So does the T cell migrate differently from the T cell that would be in the human with the hu, the human accessory cells?
So, so can we repeat again?
So the T cells that you transplanted into humanized mice, would they migrate differently? Is any study that's been done to show that?
Right, so, yeah. I mean, obviously, the best control would be to look at what human T cells do in, in the, in the human lymphoid tissue. Unfortunately, we don't have that data, so we have to compare. Unfortunately, we don't have that data, so we have to compare mouse T-cells and mouse lymphoid tissues. But I think we do a lot of control studies to see whether their migratory capacity and their behavior is very similar to what mirroring T-cells do in mirroring lymphoid tissues, to make sure that there's cross-species interactions of chemokines and cytokines. But be able to answer your question directly. Eventually, I think some of these technologies have to be done in a, you know, live tissue model or in human volunteers, or in monkeys, for example. But I believe that by virtue, again, using mouse as a model, they do behave very similarly. And I believe that we are actually looking at their natural behaviors in vivo. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be Dr. Javier Mignon, Associate Professor.
And I'm the social science something here. So it's going to be a different type of talk, I imagine. So no conflict of interest to disclose, except the disclosure of having conflicting research interests and of being conflicted by the fact that I do have numerous research interests. And really, it creates a lot of tension in a lot of the things that I do, because there's never enough time to do, to follow all the interests that come up. And this brings me to hedgehogs and foxes. So let me go a little bit into ancient Greek poetry, archilochus, and forgive my Greek rhapsodized that a fox knows many things, but a hedgehog one important thing. Then philosopher Isaiah Berlin used the metaphor, and someone tongue-in-cheek, to divide writers and thinkers into two categories: hedgehogs, who view the world through the lens of a single defining idea, and foxes who draw on wide variety of experiences for whom the world cannot be boiled down to a single idea. Later, American paleontologist, evolutionary biologist, and historian of science, Stephen J. Gold, in his last book before he died, used this analogy to explore the relationship between science and the humanities. This hedgehog and foxes has helped me in two ways: one, to understand the different roles in research and research collaborations, they do this often, but also to deal with Keith's instructions, which I will go over briefly. I would like to, this is Keith, by the way, I would like you to address, one, two at the most, aspect of your research and its global or global-reaching impact. I have withheld from questioning what the whole Keith means by global, because it's, that in itself is a very complicated term, and there's sometimes an inherent imperialism in that term, which I will not go into, because it's not the moment. But what I want to do is, I'm going to go over some research collaborations I've been involved in to explain, I guess, the issue of how I've experienced the local and the global. So this is the first study, what we did years ago when I was a post-doc with Dr. Stephen Moses, and in fact, Dr. Shiva Hali was heavily involved in this study. It was a development of a rapid ethnographic assessment tool for identifying community-level factors predictive of HIV/AIDS risk in rural India. I was then involved, I guess, at the local level in a study with Carla Pinder and a lot of other partners from Nine Circles Community Health Center and also from All Hope from Regina, Informal Caregiving Networks in HIV/AIDS, a community-based study. Then with Dr. Carlos Rojas, who's here, this large study of HIV/AIDS in indigenous YU communities of Colombia, a collaborative research and prevention project, and this is a partnership, obviously, with ANAS YU, which is a very large indigenous health organization that has 120,000 people in its roster. So we're talking very important and led by the indigenous organizations, healthcare insurance company. And the University of Antioquia were partners as well as ourselves. And then this, we found out actually a few days ago, Shana Isley, who was actually a former master student of myself, mine, received, we received $450,000 for this study from THR, Remote Control Building on Capacity to Implement Community-Based Research in Rural Northern and Remote Communities in Manitoba. So first of all, I guess, I hope this goes to show the difficulty of the local and the global, but it's clear that local informs global and the global informs the local. And at the same time, when I was trying to look at what I've been doing, what I will continue hopefully doing, at all times, I have been, sorry, at times I have been involved in research that's more focused, narrow, I guess we could call it more in-depth, which would be the hedgehog approach. But then, at times and often, in research with more breadth and what I would call cross-fertilization among disciplines and community partnerships, which would be more of the fox approach. So this leads me just to reflect on the local and what I call the Goldilocks theory of Manitoba. And I'm sure I stole this idea from somebody, but I can't remember who I stole it from. So if that person is in the audience, my apologies. The Manitoba health research environment in general, and HIV research specifically, I believe it's not too small that it lacks resources for depth, but not too large that it inhibits cross-fertilization across different silos. And again, you see, this hedgehog/fox analogy is quite fruitful, for me at least. And so Manitoba, in my experience, in that sense of size, has worked just right. And therefore, I hope most of you have read or been read the Goldilocks story. By the way, when I came to Canada, I didn't know about the Goldilocks story, so that was years ago. So I just want to go over, this might be tedious, but at the same time, I think this is important, because for me, it confirms this notion of the importance of the local environment and its connection to the global, and why I think really Manitoba, for me and what I've seen of many colleagues, have been so fruitful. We've had numerous Manitoba-based initiatives and organizations. So for instance, International Center for Infectious Diseases and International Infectious Diseases and Global Health Training Programs, of which obviously Keith has been one of the leaders, has been of tremendous value, I know for myself and I know for many other people. The Manitoba First Nations Average on Health Research Center, MFN CAR, of which I'm a research associate, has also been tremendous, both local but also in the connection to international indigenous organizations. The Center for Global Public Health, the First Nations Health and Social Secretariat of Manitoba, which is an arm in a certain way of the Assembly of Manitoba, Chiefs of Manitoba, is playing a very important role in taking control of the research. And again, they are partners with us in the collaborations that we're doing with Colombian indigenous health organizations. Nine Circles, obviously, Community Health Center, Cree Nation Tribal Health Center, the 595 Prevention Team, and so on. These are just some examples. And at a bit of a broader level, also, the national initiatives such as community-based research and collaborative and the reach that's led by OHTN has also been very helpful in this, all of these collaborations. So the instructions from Keith kept coming. In fact, the last one was last afternoon, yesterday afternoon, which said, "I'd like each of you to make one slide for the end of your talk focusing on your personal views of where Manitoba researchers should focus in the future to maximize our global impact." So when I was dancing last night, my mind was trying to figure out, what the hell am I going to put in this last slide? Because, I mean, come on, Keith, you're asking a little bit much to, you know, wow, talk of forward thinking here. So I woke up early this morning, not too early, but early enough, and this idea of what William Easterly, in a book about international development, many of you might have read it or seen it, it's a quite a critique about international development. Some of the things I don't agree with what he says, but he produces, I think, a good notion of what he calls planners versus searchers. And so planners tend to think that, you know, you can organize the world, let's say, of research or of programs almost from above and, you know, plan and, you know, make big things that will help everybody. Versus searchers would tend to react to the immediate context and formulate solutions or explore ideas or different initiatives. And really, my experience is, and when I look at my research, I see a yellow light. Nice, this is cool. There's, my experience is that the searchers, in the way we've been working, is how it defines our research, most of the time, really, because it's led by the locals' context, but it has global connections. So I guess my words of wisdom, as asked by Keith, would be to continue to create, sustain, and/or be involved in global platforms of collaboration across regions and countries, but platforms that are responsive to local searchers, continuing to embrace the diversity of research and implementation programs. It is from there that new ideas and approaches that are relevant to the different contexts emerge. I firmly believe that research grounded in context is also global. And I have finished with 50 seconds of time remaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Javier, for your insightful remarks. Questions?
You get the prize for most questions asked.
I woke up early. So everyone in this room has heard of knowledge translation and has at least a conceptualized view of what it is. And the example that's often used is...
Could you put the...
On one sphere, basic researchers, medical people, clinicians, et cetera, et cetera, need to do a better job at translating their knowledge, their science, let's say, to the community level. Now, all your collaborations that you presented are actually at the community level, but knowledge translation is a two-way street. So how do you ensure that the knowledge you generate at the community level gets translated to the other side?
Excellent point. Well, in general, all of these collaborations have an aspect in which we try to, for instance, one with Carlos Rojas in La Guajira, and a lot of the findings from that study go towards, for instance, the local and regional authorities, as trying to translate to influence, in that case, a bit of programming and policy, which is kind of the idea also behind program science and all that, in that sense. Not to mention inherently, and again, this is the case of the YU, because it's an organization that's led by representatives of the political indigenous organizations, this also is transferred to these other organizations and the ones that are providing services. So that's, that's the way. So in, but I do have to say, and we learned, I guess, from experience, that sometimes we don't leave enough resources and funding to do a better job with that. And it's happened to us more than once in different projects. So I would say, yes, to budget, we have to put, it takes a lot of funding, really, to do it properly. Thank you.
One more question.
Hi, Denise Walker from Saskatchewan. Just to follow up on John Kim's question, how do you, how can we improve how community-based research is linked to program delivery?
Program, okay. I saw a few presentations, Jamie, in a way, talked about this. Ultimately, let me sidetrack a little bit. I've always had a problem with the term, initially, knowledge transfer. I hated that term, because it's like, I'm going to transfer my knowledge to you. Now, we got a little bit better, I'm going to translate my knowledge to whoever. And I guess now we're with the term knowledge mobilization, that type of thing. Ultimately, and I guess from the social science perspective of this, is that it has to do with power relations and the issue of power. And so, in the case, and sorry that I go back to the case of the YU, but what is very interesting of that is because the healthcare organizations are essentially in the hand of the indigenous organizations, this, the programming is reshaped in the case of this research that comes out of it through the system it has of control over its healthcare. So that's the case. In case of, but that doesn't mean, and again, we see it in the Colombian case, that the national government, it's not a federal government, but it's a national government, is putting a lot of pressure on these organizations that really sometimes distorts and really inhibits a lot of the implementation. And therefore, it's really now the political power of the indigenous organizations that put pressure, and we're talking mobilization many times, like GRIEL, that tries to reshape the system to, for them to be able to implement as they wish. But, yeah. Does she have time for...
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our next speaker. Thank you, Javier. Dr. Yuaf Keenan, who's an assistant professor. Welcome, Yuaf.
Thank you, and thanks for the organizers for inviting me. And I'll try to, I don't have any animal analogies, but try to talk a bit about a couple of ideas on my research and where it might go. No relevant conflicts of interest for this presentation. So my research is focused on the fact or that HIV is a treatable disease where we achieve virological suppression in people who take their antiretroviral medications. And we have had tremendous improvement in the quality of life and the options available to HIV-infected individuals. The medications now achieve undetectable viral loads when taken and are well tolerated, and we have increasing number of simple, relatively easy-to-take, single-tablet regimens, and we can find tailored treatment for HIV-infected individuals. And that has resulted in decreases in all-cause mortality and improved quality of life and decrease in HIV-defining illnesses and HIV-defining malignancies are related to this effective treatment. But with that in mind, there's an increase in diseases that are not the typical HIV-defining illnesses, and those include non-AIDS-defining cancers as well as end-organ dysfunction that affects virtually every organ that's been looked at. I just gave a few examples in cardiovascular disease, which is thought to occur approximately 10 years earlier compared to non-HIV-infected individuals. And what connects all those, we've heard through several presentations in the conference on things that are linked to that, and immune activation is emerging as one of the drivers of disease susceptibility and disease progression, as well as the response to antiretroviral therapy. therapy. And this immune activation is a slightly vague concept with even vaguer ways of measuring, because each study uses very different methods of measuring, measuring innate immune activation versus measuring adaptive cells activation and measuring markers that are surrogate for immune activation. But it is this persistent immune activation that is not normalized by, completely by the antiretroviral therapy despite virological suppression that is thought to be the driver of the access morbidity. Antiretroviral medications bring immune activation to close to the level of uninfected individuals, but never quite achieve full suppression of this immune activation. And this is driven largely, and we heard it in the plenary, the basic science plenary, bacterial translocation and the products related to that, and a breach in the gut epithelial barrier with a myriad of substances that are linked to that. Those all are correlated with the level of immune activation. Among them are soluble CD14, for example, as well as other markers. And those have been shown and linked to not only immune activation, but also mortality. So if we look at immune activation and inflammation as the main driver of badness, so it's been linked to many of the organ dysfunctions. There's some evidence that it predicts the individuals that respond poorly by less bounce-back of their CD4 counts. It has been linked to chronic kidney disease, decreased bone mineral density, and cognitive decline, as well as to cardiac cardiovascular disorders and endothelial dysfunction. There's slightly less evidence about the lungs, and I will try to focus today on a couple of those emerging organs of interest. So my research is focused on looking at the effect of immune activation on three aspects. One is poor immune recovery, and in that, we've done some studies that show that individuals with higher levels of immune activation are the ones that do less well on the antiretroviral therapy, so they do not normalize their CD4 to CD8 ratio and are more likely to have lower rebound of the CD4 despite virological suppression. But I won't show anything related to that today. The two other aspects is looking at lung dysfunction and a bit of blood-brain barrier dysfunction. I'll show a snippet of both of those. So lungs are relevant. Why are they relevant? Because HIV opportunistic infections are most frequently affecting the lungs. It remains relevant despite antiretroviral therapy, because without antiretroviral therapy, the risk of pneumonia in HIV-infected individuals is 100-fold higher than non-HIV-infected, but this doesn't normalize. It just drops to about 20-fold or 30-fold with effective antiretroviral therapy. And there are several reasons for that that I won't get into. So despite the dramatic effect of antiretroviral therapy, patients with HIV still have higher rates of acute pneumonia. And we've shown that this is locally relevant, and a study that was done in the past has shown that it's still the most common cause for admission among HIV-infected individuals with therapy, and it's associated with significant costs and morbidity. Follow-up study to that has looked at what has happened more recently in the last 10 years, and it's still, we have people presenting late, so pneumonia is one of the most common causes of presentation, and that was presented by Sarah Van Galen. And we are inadequately diagnosing the etiology in close to a third of the patients, and we're using very low invasive procedures, and we're not doing enough diagnostic testing, so we do not have bronchoalveolar lavage or etiological diagnosis in substantial proportion of our patients. But despite the fact that the lungs are important, they have been a neglected organ in the context of immune activation, and there are several lines of evidence that show that pneumonia causes a transient decline in CD4 that rebounds, causes increased immune activation that is persistent, and causes persistent lung damage that is not completely reversed after resolution of the pneumonia. And together with that, there are several studies that show that patients infected with HIV, even if you control for smoking, have higher rates of chronic lung disease significantly compared to age-matched controls, controlled for smoking. And the markers that correlate that, to that, in terms of inflammation have not been adequately defined, and the same markers that have been used for cardiovascular risk do not work in this context. So there are a couple of studies that looked, that interlooked in six D dimer, and they were not found to be associated with the incidence of chronic lung disease. So lung disease is important, lung infections are common, and immune activation is likely a contributing factor. So through our international collaboration with the University of Antioquia and the Pontificia Bolivariana in Colombia, in Medellin, we looked at patients infected with HIV who had a diagnosed pneumonia, and looked at the different etiologies, and we divided them into fungal and mycobacterial infection. And we identified distinct cytokine and inflammatory patterns in the BAL of those patients. For example, tuberculosis was associated with higher levels of, list of cytokines that you have there in this slide, and if an individual who had three of those, seven cytokines elevated, was more likely to have TB. So there was a pattern of cytokines that distinguished mycobacterial versus fungal infection. And we've managed since then to adopt RNA-seq technology to BAL, and with that, we've tried to look at the gene expression in the BAL and what are the inflammatory pathways that are activated by different pathogens. And we have identified distinct patterns. The numbers are small and need to be expanded, but some of them that have some biological plausibility, as they may be related to the pathophysiology or pathogenesis of tuberculosis. In this case, we looked at interferon-related genes that may be associated with mycobacterial disease and have some identified mechanism of action in that context. And just one more slide of the second project of brain dysfunction, and we know that increased brain dysfunction in HIV-infected individuals, and we know that it may be correlated with systemic immune activation. So we took an opportunistic approach, trying to link between that and imaging finding. And this is an example that shows you on, on one, on the panel on your right-hand side. So in this, you see an individual who had an MRI done and then developed neurocognitive decline over a year. The second image shows areas of breach within the blood-brain barrier, and this is using existing MRI studies with a new diagnostic, with a new mathematical model for, or algorithm that can be applied to detect breaches in the BBB. So we're now in the process of correlating that with immune activation. So this is thanks to a collaboration, a fantastic collaboration with Medellin, with the University of Antioquia, and this is what has allowed for the studies to take place. And the idea is that those strong collaborations can be a platform for doing multiple studies in the same cohort. So we've, we're lucky enough to have a cohort started, and we're trying to do simultaneous study of both the lung dysfunction as well as the BBB dysfunction. And Manitoba has great international collaborations, which are fantastic platform to add additional research projects to existing collaborations. Most important to me is that it has to come back and be locally relevant and provide expanding of international collaborations with building upon existing platforms and adding some new partnerships. And it's basically linked to the theme of this conference, which is a loop of international, global, then local, and back, but you have to make it relevant to the local context. Thank you.
Thank you, Yuaf. We have time for one question. One question?
Excellent, I get to ask the question. Yuaf, can you just describe a little bit what is unique about the collaboration in Colombia that provides opportunities that may not be as readily available here?
Yeah, it's multifactorial, but it's a lucky collaboration that couldn't have happened anywhere else. It's thanks to the training, international training program and meeting collaborators who are interested in doing research together, which is the key. You can't force. And the other factor is it's, to me, it's less of a colonialist approach to research, because it's, the ideas flow bidirectionally. It's not one side coming with the ideas and the funding, it's both sides have their agenda and ideas. So that's what makes this more of a synergistic and therefore productive and enjoyable collaboration. And the fact that there is a phenomenal group that has skill sets that we don't have, that we bring something to the table, so everyone is putting new resources, and it's easily, easy to see how this can turn into a synergistic project. And the other thing is that it's a phenomenal platform for capacity building with having trainees from Colombia here and vice versa, and I think it's interesting, both in the basic science, but also in the clinical platform, having an opportunity to experience developing country with tropical medicine in a context where resources are available, provides phenomenal training environment, both for basic scientists and clinicians.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dr. Marissa Baker, who's also an associate professor. Welcome, Marissa.
Good morning, and thanks for the opportunity to be a part of this session. I'm going to be speaking about a program of research that we're doing that's exploring early HIV risk among young sex workers and young women. And while I'm standing up here, this work is really a result of an incredible team that has come together. These are my conflicts of interest, but no relationship to this work I'm talking about today. And I want to acknowledge that we are on Treaty One land and the homeland of the Métis Nation. So as we've heard about over the last couple of days, we know that female sex workers are at an increased risk of HIV. And HIV prevention interventions that are targeted for female sex workers and their clients are a really critical component of HIV prevention programs more broadly. And we speak of these as targeted intervention programs, or TIs, as I'll be using. And we know that these TIs and comprehensive TIs have really been effective in decreasing HIV prevalence amongst female sex workers. But there are a number of challenges with delivering targeted HIV prevention programs, and those challenges relate, in large part, I think, to difficulties with achieving scale and coverage of the population, in this case, female sex workers. And I think it really is as a result of two key factors. One is that women who are engaging in formal sex work may not necessarily identify as female sex workers. And programs don't often know the size or the location of the sex worker population, and so it becomes difficult to set your coverage targets. And on top of that, there are specific challenges in providing services to new and to young female sex workers, and that's often because young female sex workers are hidden. They might not have the community around them to be able to support them in engaging or accessing programs, and programs don't necessarily have the ability to access these young women. And there's existing data that supports early HIV prevalence and high early HIV prevalence amongst female sex workers. So in South India, where the University of Manitoba has done a lot of work, up to 21% of female sex workers were infected with HIV before their second year in practice. And similarly, in other places around the world, in Kenya, HIV prevalence was very high among female sex workers who had only been formally engaged in sex work for a short period of time. And similar work from Canada by Kate Shannon's group has shown that women who initiated in sex work earlier on had a higher HIV prevalence than those entering into sex work later on. And this risk that we see with young women and young female sex workers is as a result of a number of different socio-behavioral associations, which are shown here, some of which are just listed here, as well as some biological mechanisms. And our group had done some work in collaboration and in partnership with the programs that we were providing in South India. And the Piana study was a study led by Jamie Blanchard. It was a cohort study of migrant and mobile female sex workers in states in South India, Karnataka. And in that study, we found that 2.6% of sex workers had died of an HIV-associated complication before their second year in practice. And in follow-up work that we did, we identified that a quarter of female sex workers experienced what we would identify as being a commercial first sex, but didn't necessarily identify as a formal sex worker until almost five years later. And in that study, they spoke with us about a lot of high-risk behavior that had happened following their sexual debut, but before they self-identified as a sex worker. And so this suggested to us that there was a lot of risk early on and prior to the period of time when a woman might self-identify as a sex worker. And so we started to think about these two periods of time, and we refer to them here as the transition period and the access gap. So the transition period, as we talk about it, is that time from when a young woman makes her sexual debut or has her first sex, to when she might, at some point later on, self-identify as a sex worker. And in that time, and this is not necessarily a linear relationship, she may engage in transactional sex. And so we refer to that period of time as this transition period. And then after a woman self-identifies as a sex worker, there's that access gap that I spoke about earlier, where there are challenges in program engagement on both sides, young women accessing programs and programs being able to provide services for these young sex workers. And we hypothesize that the HIV risk during these periods of time are at their highest. And so we wanted to try to explore this further, and so we use this framework that looks at biology and behavior to try to understand what's happening at the individual level in terms of risk. But then we also step back to look at the broader structural factors at the proximal, intermediate, and distal level, as they're shaping and influencing what's happening in terms of sex work organization, sex work structure, and how it influences that client and sex worker interface, and how all of that will then affect what's happening in terms of HIV transmission and the epidemic trajectory. And so we designed a study, which we refer to as the transition studies. And the idea behind transitions is to really understand and characterize what's happening during the transition period and access gap, so that we get a sense of risk and vulnerability at the individual level. But then working with modelers, Social Mistamishra is leading the modeling work on this, we want to try to understand how important these periods of time are in terms of epidemic control. So if we're not able, so if these periods of time are associated with high risk and programs aren't able to access young women or young sex workers during these periods of time, how does that affect the population-level control of the targeted prevention programmings? And how does it affect the HIV epidemic? And so the study took place in two settings, and the idea behind this was to try to understand how the broader sociocultural context influences these two periods of time, as well as how the epidemiology, HIV and STI, will also influences, will also influence, sorry, the risk that we're seeing during these two periods. And so we conducted the study in Mombasa, which is a beautiful city on the coast of Kenya. It's a port city, a major trade center, and center for coastal It's a port city, a major trade center and center for coastal tourism, and has a population of about a million people. And we conducted the study as well in Yekhropetrovsk, Ukraine. Yekhropetrovsk also has a population of about a million. It's an industrial city in the eastern part of Ukraine and is approximately 200 kilometers west, straight west of Donetsk, which was the center of the conflict zone. And so the study had two key steps to it. We had a pre-study activity, which was mapping and enumerating the population. And this formed the sampling frame for the study. And then the study itself was a cross-sectional biological and behavioral survey among young women aged 14 to 24 years. And we had three groups in the study, Group 1, Group 2, and Group 3, as they're shown here. So Group 1 are those women who have had their first sex, but haven't necessarily engaged in transactional and don't identify as formal sex workers. Group 2 are those women who have engaged in transactional sex. And Group 3 are those women who self-identify as sex workers. And we didn't necessarily recruit women specifically into these groups, but I'll tell you a little bit about the process, and I'm happy to talk about it after the talk as well. So the behavioral survey was quite long, and we asked a broad number of areas of questions to try to get at some of the both sort of behavioral as well as the structural factors. And then we conducted a biological survey, where all women had the opportunity to have HIV testing done. And in Ukraine, it was also a rapid test that combined Hep C testing. And in Kenya, we took further samples and were working with a number of fantastic microbiologists and immunologists who have been in this session, so Keith and Yoav and Lyle, who you'll hear from later on, and Paul Sandstrom and others, to explore this issue of what's happening in terms of biological risk. And so we collected, in Kenya alone, plasma, urine, soft cup specimens, white blood cells, Pax gene for whole blood. And some of the tests that we're hoping, that those folks on the team are hoping to look at have been listed on the slide. So this is a picture of our happy team from Kenya and our happy team from Ukraine. So I'm going to present just a couple of slides. We're still in the early stages of analysis, but I want to highlight just a couple of important findings. So the mapping that we did was our pre-study step, and this really set our sampling frame. So in Mombasa, we identified just over 1,200 hotspots. And so these were spots where sex workers might go to solicit clients. But we expanded it to try to get a sense of where other women might be going to look for other sexual partners. Of those 1,200 spots, about 1,000 were validated to be active. And all of this was done in partnership with programs. So it was peers that led the mapping, we worked with programs, and we tried to get a sense as to whether these spots were known to the program or not, so that at each stage of the study, through our work with programs, we're informing the programs, and the programs were able to revise their work plan based on some of the steps that we were, some of what we were finding in the study. So only half of those spots were known to the program at that time. And I think it's really reflective of the fact that sex work spots do move and they turn over. And so it's important to continually update what you know in terms of where you're delivering your services to. And what we found in Kenya, based on our mapping, and we'll see how this plays out from our survey data, but based on the mapping, we found that those three groups of women, so where these women might be going to look for partners, that there was overlap in the type of spots that they were congregating in, in 85% of the spots that we identified. And that's a little bit different than what we saw in Yekhropetrovsk. And sex work is very different in the two different contexts. So in Yekhropetrovsk, we had just under 900 hotspots identified, with 778 that were active. And similarly, only about half were known to the program. But there, the overlap between the women who were from those different groups, in terms of where they were congregating to look for partners, was significantly less than what we saw in Mombasa. And this has implications if we think about the findings later on from the study in terms of where we might need to configure and how we might need to configure outreach services for these populations. Okay, I have one minute, so I will, I think I'll be okay. So in terms of our study progress to date, we started in the spring of 2015 and completed just in December. So we're just starting to look at the data. Numbers in terms of how we did for recruitment are shown here. We had just under 1,300 women from Mombasa and just over 1,800 women from Yekhropetrovsk. And the breakdown in terms of the group are shown there. I'm just presenting the overall HIV positivity. I haven't broken it down by group, we're still working through that here, as well as the Hep C positivity for Ukraine, because we had the rapid testing data there. So overall HIV positivity, 3.4% in Mombasa, and just under 2% in Yekhropetrovsk, and Hep C, 5.5%. We, for this presentation, pulled out just a few variables to be able to present to you here. So what I wanted to look at was what was happening at that first sex act. So we recruited women, and then we asked them to reflect back on what had happened. And so women, at the time of recruitment, were on average about 16, oh, sorry, about 19 years. So here, we're asking age at their first sex. And you see the age at the top line there, where women who identified as sex workers were significantly younger, but overall quite a young age for the three groups. We also asked about age difference between their first sex partner, as to whether that first partner was more than 10 years older. And you see the data shown here, so 18% amongst sex workers and about 8 and 6 in the other groups. And then we asked about whether there had been an exchange of anything at that first sex. And you see that significant numbers of all women across all groups indicated that there was an exchange of something at that very first sex act. And I think a striking finding for me, when we asked about that first sex act and whether it was a forced sex act, 18% of sex workers indicated that that first sex act was a forced sex. And almost 10% of young women, so these were women at the age of 16 on average, indicated forced sex. So what we're hoping to do through the course of this study, as we're looking at our data and as we're working with our partners to analyze and interpret and understand this, is we've used a program science approach to this project. And so we're hoping to try to get at questions that can answer some of the questions that program and policymakers have had along these different sort of spheres of a program lifecycle, so planning and assessment, implementation and management and evaluation. And I've listed some of the questions on this slide there. So the impact one, and I'm glad that I wasn't the only one that was daunted by this question. So I hope that my work will have a degree of global impact. But when asked about what I think was important, a lot of these principles you've heard, so I tried to think about what were some of the key principles for me. I think sustained partnership is critical if we're going to have a global impact, and that's partnership with communities, it's partnerships with programs, and it's partnerships with government. The questions really need to be driven by programs and communities. And we have to be working, I think, in interdisciplinary teams, and that's what we've tried to do for this project. And the picture here is really to remind me of that. So those are my kids. And Efrem's on the bottom, and they're twin boys. So he can climb anything, but his brother often needs a little bit of a boost. So this is the reminder of how much more of an impact we can have when we work together in teams. I want to acknowledge all the investigators that are part of this and all of the organizations that we're working with to make this happen. A big thank you, of course, to all the women who agreed to participate in the study, the entire study team. Eve Chuk, who's the research assistant for this project and has been coordinating it. Sharmista, who's a COPI, and Jamie Blanchard and Stephen Moses, because their work has been really inspirational and has helped shape this work. And our funders, C I H R, for their support for this study. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I get me out of questions then?
No, sorry, we won't have any time for questions, but I'm sure, yeah, you can talk to Marissa after. I'm going to introduce the next speaker, which is Dr. Lyle McKinnon, who's an assistant professor, a brand new. Welcome, Lyle.
Good morning, everyone. So keeping with Keith's instructions, I tried to stick to one or maybe two things, which I guess makes me like, a bit more like the hedgehog, or at least tempting to be, attempting to be like the hedgehog. I feel like most of the time, I run around a lot more like the fox, but it's nice to have a presentation where you can try to be the hedgehog. So I'm going to talk a bit about mucosal inflammation and HIV risk in the setting of tenofavir gel, which is a study that we've done at CapriSA. And I'll try to put this in context of other work that we do. So I have no conflicts. So one of my main interests is the correlates of HIV acquisition. And this has been a long focus of the Manitoba Nairobi collaboration, but I think it's still an important question that there's still work to do on. The proportion of a population that acquires HIV is typically small, and even in places where the epidemic is large. And acquisition typically occurs at a relatively young age. So the percentage of people exposed is many times larger, several orders of magnitude larger than the percentage that eventually becomes infected. So sort of understanding this process has always been sort of a focus of my work, whether there's a threshold of exposures that leads to infection, the impact of cofactors, and also responses to these cofactors. And I still feel there's a need for prospectively validated risk quantification that combines both behavioral and biological factors, much like Marissa just discussed. So in terms of practical implications of why you would do this work, I always have sort of a list of four. And I've divided them actually into those that require mechanistic insight and those that don't. So for the top two, basically, these would be predictive variables. So you could either do risk profiling for intensified investigations or interventions. So if you knew who was at higher risk, you could potentially target these people somehow, either by using epidemiological or biological variables. You also might be able to use risk profiling to do smaller proof-of-concept trials. So if you can define a group with, that you know will have higher incidence, then you could potentially do smaller trials and get faster proof-of-concept results that you could take into larger trials. The bottom two require mechanistic insight, and this is, basically, you could break these into knowledge of what not to induce. For example, for a vaccine or a microbicide, things that you know are bad for people that you want to avoid from a safety point of view. But also, you might be able to identify host-directed therapies or prophylaxis for HIV. If you know, if you can identify markers that are mechanistically linked to the acquisition event, then you could potentially target these somehow. And I think we've seen a little bit of this at this meeting. So if you want to be a mucosal immunologist, you have to have a figure like this. And this is a particularly nice one. And I'm not going to go into, I don't have time to go into very much detail about everything that's on here. But basically, you know, there's many components to the mucosa. And I think in the session yesterday, we covered a lot about how these can be linked to acquisition. The one point I want to make is that cytokines are immune molecules that are sort of central to all of these different things. So when you talk about target cells, or the barrier, or the mucus, or the microbiome, a lot of these things have linkages with cytokines. And so I'm talking about cytokines today, so. Basically, in this paper, was a collaboration with Adam Bergner and Kelly Arnold, and Rupert Call was involved, and a lot of other people, where we looked at around 100 HIV-uninfected Kenyan sex workers. And I think this shows the utility of using cytokines to basically define the mucosal environment. So what we did is we took people with, you know, we used a scoring tool that defined people with having a lot of cytokines or not having a lot of cytokines. And we showed that this was linked to a lot of different mucosal proteins defined by proteomics. So the figure on the left just shows you that some of the proteins that were, the number of proteins that were elevated and depressed in association with these elevated mucosal cytokines. In the middle figure, we were able to differentiate the groups very well using cytokines. So EMC means elevated mucosal cytokines, and those with elevated mucosal cytokines were, could be differentiated in a multivariate model from those who didn't have elevated cytokines. And then on the figure on the right, basically, that we can link this to target cells. And there's a number of other biological pathways that you would have to read the paper if you're interested in these, but cell migration and target cells were one of these. So, I mean, this is why we think, and this, and lots of other work as well, are why we think that cytokines are good biomarkers to look at in terms of HIV risk. And another point that I'd like to make is the importance of mucosal interactions. So I've pulled a few examples out of the literature. And this is, so basically, what people do is they look at the impact of DMPA, for example, on the mucosal environment. But it's becoming clear that, you know, inconsistencies in some of these studies might have to do with the fact that DMPA can also interact with other things in the mucosa. So there's three prominent examples that I'll go through very quickly. One of them is age. So the DMPA HIV effect was seen to be much greater in younger women, even than women who are just slightly older. So a ninefold increased risk of HIV in women 18 to 20 compared to a twofold increased risk in slightly older women. A paper that just came out last year looked at an interaction between DMPA and HSV2. And basically, DMPA HIV risk was only found in those who were HSV2 seropositive, where there was almost no effect at all, and those who were HSV2 seronegative. And then a very nice paper that also came out last year looked at DMPA interacting with a variety of microflora and STIs. So I think that these examples, to me, highlight the need for large studies that allow stratification to determine consistency of effects across subgroups. And I think this is going to help us get a more complete understanding of the mucosal environment. So I'm actually going to talk about one of these today, and that's a cohort analysis of mucosal cytokines in the CapriSA OO4 study. So CapriSA OO4 was a microbicide trial, which was about 40% effective in preventing HIV. And in this particular analysis, we took 774 participants, which is most of the cohort. It was all of the available cohort. And these people were sampled at 2,144 visits. So it's a very large cytokine database. 59 acquired HIV, the rest remained uninfected, so we could do a survival analysis. We measured 48 cytokines in cervical vaginal lavage. And then some details about the statistical models that I'll skip for the interest in time. But we basically did model these in cox progression analysis that take into account the multiple measures. And what we wanted to do in this was stratify by study arms, so to look at the effect of whether a woman was taking tenofavir gel or placebo gel. And this is nice because we can do a randomized comparison. So basically, the women don't know which gel they're using, so we can look and see if you were randomized to one side of the study or the other, whether your cytokine-HIV relationships are similar. So we, in addition to modeling the cytokines individually, we also looked at inflammation as a score, which is five of nine of these key cytokines, which we've published on before. And we also looked at returned used applicators per month as a way to define gel exposures. So in terms of the main results of the study, this is a lot of information on this slide. And it takes, it took me a long time to figure out how to present it. But basically, in the red bars, we're looking at the hazard ratio for HIV acquisition for a given cytokine, if you're in the placebo arm. And the blue bars is the same thing if you're in the tenofavir arm. And these are ranked in order of whether the effect was bigger in the placebo arm, which is shown on the left, or whether the effect was bigger in the tenofavir arm, shown on the right. And those boxes there show basically statistical significance. So a dark red box means significant in the placebo arm and a dark blue in the tenofavir arm. So you can see, I think, right away, first of all, it sort of looks like you have double vision, if you look at it too quickly. But towards the right side of the slide, you can see that a lot of cytokines have bigger HIV effects if you are in the tenofavir arm compared to the placebo arm. A lot of cytokines in the middle of this figure obviously don't have much effect and are similar between arms. And then on the left, there's a few cytokines which have stronger effects in the placebo arm and weaker effects in the tenofavir arm. So this is, and the stars indicate the results that were significant overall. So this is a lot of information. So one of the things we wanted to do further is to break this into this inflammation definition that we've been using. Yeah, you can see the counter. Oh, just turned orange. So basically, if you look at the, if you stratify people by whether they have inflammation or not, and which arm they were in, the top left corner of the slide shows the HIV incidence. And you can see that the incidence is higher in people with inflammation, but also that the tenofavir gel doesn't have much effect in the people with inflammation. So the tenofavir efficacy was 50% in people without inflammation, which is slightly better than the intent to treat analysis, and actually had no effect, even a slightly negative effect, which was not significant in the inflammation group. And the other information on the slide just And the other information on the slide just does some interaction analysis and some survival analysis. We also wanted to see if there was a dose dependence to this. And just in the interest of time, I'll just present the figure on the bottom, which is, again, looking at the hazard ratio for whether inflammation increases your HIV risk, stratified by which arm you were in and how many gels you used. So in the women who use a lot of gels, this inflammation effect was stronger than in women who have used a medium amount or a low amount of gels. And this was particularly for the tenofavir arm. So women who use a lot of tenofavir gel, if they had inflammation, it was four times, 4.4 times increased risk of HIV acquisition. And you could see that in the placebo, women who use a lot of placebo gels, that wasn't seen. And then the last figure I'll present in terms of data is just looking at the question of whether the amount of tenofavir exposed to has an impact on your cytokines. And it seems like it does. So this is, again, a lot of data. So this is 48 cytokines, looking at linear mixed models. And what we did is we correlated the amount of gels people used three months before their cytokine visit. And we looked to see if this was positively or negatively associated with the level of cytokine. So cytokine is the outcome variable in this. And my time is up. But basically, you can see that these are ranked in order of having larger tenofavir effects. So on the left side of the slide, all those blue dots show that if you use more tenofavir, for example, you have more IL-15, more IL-2, more IL-18. And this was not consistent between the placebo arm, where the effects are sort of, are often quite different. So in summary, we think that tenofavir alters the effect of inflammatory cytokines and HIV acquisition, potentially either selecting for highly susceptible individuals, which was the original hypothesis of the study, but also possibly by altering cytokine pathways. And then just the point that subgroup effects need to be defined in very large studies, like we feel like we've done here. And then a few other results about cytokines and HIV acquisition. So I'll just, my last slide, which won't take very long, is Keith's request for where Manitoba Research should focus their efforts. And I also struggled, the first thing I put was a weather joke, which I then removed with the policy of not making any weather jokes. But I sort of focused on what I think are three important, mine's much more focused on questions rather than general principles. But I think we need to confirm the altered HIV susceptibility findings by continuing to study large, relevant, prospective cohorts, including validating these things in multiple populations. Because if they're going to be useful for anything, I think they really need to be validated. And then determining mechanisms and translating these mechanisms if we can get to that stage. I think transmission dynamics is an area that we could do a lot more work in, particularly with all of our international collaborations. So looking at, you know, empirical transmission linkages, whether it's using phylogenetics, trying to understand how key populations transmit HIV and acquire HIV. And I also, I think program science is something that we're also very strong, and we need to continue doing so. You know, as we're doing these biological studies, the prevention landscape is changing, and we need to, you know, as we're doing this research, we have to be delivering these tools to people who need them the most. So I'll stop there with just some acknowledgements for the two studies I presented. And thank you.
Thank you, Lyle. We're going to have time for one question. No lucky one?
Up at the front here.
I didn't really manage to look at all of the different analytes you had along the top of your slide there. In addition to cytokines, did you have any information on VEGF pathways in your analysis? Like VEGF pathways, whether, just following up on Thomas Maruka's stuff of dissemination and trafficking, whether the, like, angiogenesis pathways, basically, were?
Oh, yeah. So I mean, there are a lot of growth panels, or growth factors in that cytokine panel, but I have to confess that I actually don't know much about any of them. But there were some cytokine associations with HIV that we haven't seen before, I think. So I think studying more cytokines is useful than just the core number that most people study.
Thanks very much to our speakers. When we designed this session, we wanted to sort of continue our theme of bringing multidisciplinarity to you so you could sit in one chair and have many different disciplines presented to you. And I think we, the speakers did a great job bringing that to you. And we did focus on Manitoba because, as the host, we wanted to highlight that a little bit. But that's just sort of a proof of principle, that this same kind of session could be done in Vancouver, Montreal, Toronto, London, Halifax, anywhere across the country. Could have the same session where trying to build on local expertise and how to maximize the impact. And one of the benefits of this multidisciplinary approach is that basic scientists get to learn about Greek poets and their analogies of foxes and hedgehogs. And I think that Hevay was able to bring that out and show us that, you know, that sometimes we want to focus with intense depth of vision and other times, a lot of breadth. I think one of the overall themes and one of the things that I think that I'll take away from this session is that our young researchers who are, you know, planning the next 30 years of their careers are thinking about the importance of the, making a concerted, focused, excellent effort, expanding that to global platforms, and then bringing it back to the local communities, and always doing all of that in a context that respects the local priorities and the local partnerships that have been developed over time. So I think that's the lesson that I'm going to take back. And I want to thank everyone for attending this session. And I encourage you to hang out. And then at 11:30, we'll be starting the community rapporteur session. So thanks for my co-chair, Jean-Pierre, and thanks all of you for attending.